Hi and welcome to another edition of Newsmakers Journal of the Vaccine Year. I'm Jerry Roberts. It is Friday, September 24th, and we are delighted to welcome back this morning two members of the Santa Barbara Unified School Board, President Kate Ford and immediate past President Laura Capps. Thanks both for being with us. We're going to talk a little after-action report about last night's school board meeting, which was long and quite emotional at several points. And the issue was whether to extend the vaccine mandate that you all had previously approved. Originally, for staff and for teachers, there had been this option to have the vaccine or to get tested weekly. This resolution now will remove that. And I counted 52 people who testified, 10 of whom were in support, 42 against. That's about 80/20 for those keeping score at home. And you were announced as tyrants, communists, domestic enemies of the US and violators of the code, no word on the Napoleonic code of those who were looking for that. But anyway, Kate, what was your takeaway from the meeting? Do you feel like in approving this resolution, you were going against the widespread sentiment of the community based on what you heard? Or did you feel like that was not a representative group?
Well, you know, I don't think it was a totally representative group. And after last night, I've done a lot of thinking just about education because I think Laura will agree that we got a lot of letters in favor of this. And we have heard from a lot of people who are in favor of, you know, eliminating the option of testing. But from an educator's point of view, I'm thinking we had people who said, "I can't do that. I don't feel comfortable doing that. I'm too nervous to do that." And I just think that, you know, once again, we've got an issue in this country of people either being apathetic and/or just not feeling comfortable about taking a stand. So to answer your question, I think that they're a small group in this town, but they are loud. And so it's really important for us to listen and keep going forward. You asked me what I thought of the meeting. I was delighted because, you know, with the Brown Act, Laura and I didn't, we don't have any idea how the rest of the board was going to react. We knew that we were very excited about our op-ed and the kinds of conversations we had had. But I was mostly just so pleased with the way that every single board member and Dr. Maldonado and her staff had really just stepped up with the kinds of research, the kinds of support for the resolution change that really made it possible for it to be much smoother than it could have been. And that's a result of just a lot of hard work.
Okay. Laura, so Kate mentioned the op-ed that you all did that appeared everywhere except on Newsmakers. I criticized myself severely, but be that as it may. So did this idea originate with you two? Did it come from Dr. Maldonado? Or what was the genesis of it?
Yeah, thanks. Obviously, these are tough, tough questions. I don't believe they should be political, but they've turned into political. And I'm really proud about what happened. And what the narrative is, you know, Kate and I brought a resolution forward in August that had the testing option for those who didn't want to be vaccinated. In my mind, I optimistically thought, okay, maybe we'll have, you know, 10% of our 1,600 employees, maybe 10% will choose not to be vaccinated. But those won't be employees that are interacting with young children. They'll be like in business services or, I don't know, just not, you know, not actually physically tying shoes on small kids who can't be vaccinated. And then what happened was we kept getting the numbers and they weren't, in my mind, satisfactory. They were 85%, but we had 4% refusing. And then we had a whole slew of people that just wouldn't tell us, which in my mind means if you're not going to tell your boss, your employer, if you've been vaccinated or not, you haven't. So we have to assume that they weren't. And what really triggered it for me as a mom of an elementary school is what I heard that, and I don't know names because of confidentiality, but I heard that a teacher, an unvaccinated teacher in our schools potentially infected three students with COVID. And that whole class had to be quarantined. And that just, it was a line in the sand for me. I just knew that we had to act. I flipped it around. If we don't act, shame on us. And we have to tighten this up. And people who choose not to be vaccinated can't also choose to have jobs where they care for young children, similar to the state where you can't take care of patients, medically vulnerable patients as a healthcare worker and choose to be unvaccinated. So of course, I turned to my awesome partner in crime here, Kate Ford. And because with the Brown Act, just the two of us were the ones that pushed this forward with full support of Dr. Maldonado and her team. And it took about a week to get this in motion. And I'm really proud of the quick action we took and the fact that it was unanimous, the fact that so many of our local leaders came forward, Dr. Doranoso, the county public health, Salud Carvajal, Bonique Limone, et cetera, et cetera, in addition to so many parents that are just grateful today. Because here's the kicker, and I'll stop now. If your child is infected by, if your child is in a classroom with a teacher who's unvaccinated, you have no idea of knowing because of our employment law. And to me, as a parent, that just is wrong. I get that it's the law and I can't change the law, but I can change this. So that's what we set out to do.
Yeah, I had a couple of things, Jerry.
Oh, absolutely.
Just by way of a little bit of history, I remember, and I remember because I asked the question, I think it was in June or July that I asked Dr. Wagonick, as a result of all of the universities saying that people, their employees had to be vaccinated and students had to be vaccinated, could we ever do anything like that in the public schools? And at that time, it was just a seed of an idea. And to Laura's point, I just think that things just move so quickly because people are so concerned about keeping kids and staff safe. And I totally agree that when we, you know, we just started going, "What, what, what?" And just putting ourselves in the place, as Laura is really, really, of being a parent who doesn't know if their child, their teacher is vaccinated or not. It was sort of like the tipping point for us. I'd also just mentioned that Laura and I are kind of obsessed with the news. She gets very deep into the national picture. I get very deep into the state school district picture. And we kept sharing things back and forth. And so just at one point, Laura just said, "Do you want to write an op-ed?" And of course, I agreed because she's awesome at doing that kind of thing.
Yeah. Well, and I recommend, I congratulate you for having five bullets in the piece, by the way. Never have any even number of bullets. Always need to be off. Anyway.
I thought of you with that.
Yes, tangentially. All right. One of the fascinating things last night was the resolution, as I recall, said something like 677,000 deaths nationally. And then Mr. Price, Greg Price, one of the world's great barristers, your attorney stood up and said, "Well, by the way, it's now 681,000, so you need to amend it." This morning, I looked at 688,000, so you're going to need to amend it again. But obviously, my point is this Delta variant is really driving this spike that we're seeing nationally. And your, you know, kind of bottom line concern here, other than kids not getting sick, was you want to keep the schools open. Dr. Maldonado said on this program, "We're 150% sure we're going to keep them open." And so was that, how much of your concern was that, you know, putting aside this sort of individual people getting sick and so on?
Yeah, I mean, yes. Three people died yesterday in our county. We're at almost 500. And so it's not just those, those children who are getting COVID. It's who are they bringing it home to? I mean, my son, you know, sees my mom on a daily basis, who's 83 and a half. And, you know, I mean, just, so it's not, it's not, it's, again, it's the collective good. It's public health. It's public schools. It's what we should be teaching our children. It's not just about individual, "Oh, I don't want to put this in my body because only 6 billion people have gotten it so far." It's really about what we can all do together in a crisis. And so, yeah, it's about, this is about vaccines prevent people by and large from dying. It's about keeping fewer people from dying. It's, and so that's what, that's what, it's pretty motivating. I'm Claire Isabelle on this stuff. A lot of things are hard. And this was certainly hard. I don't mean to diminish, but there's no ambiguity.
All right. I totally agree. Just to, you know, I took a long walk down memory lane the last few weeks. And I just think about the last, about this time last year, everyone was absolutely dying to get that vaccine approved. And that, that would be the answer. We had teachers, parents, students, everyone saying, "We need everyone vaccinated. That's when we'll feel safe to go back." And so we have the vaccine. It just only underscores that I'm wondering if people remember how desperate we felt a year ago and why this is the right decision.
All right. Let me throw a couple of numbers out to ask you about. You mentioned earlier, I think, 85 or so percent of teachers and staff have gotten it. So basically, if I read your, if I read your op-ed correctly, there's about 164 adults, 164 people, teachers and staff. And that's who this was really aimed at, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And of those, do you know how many are saying that they have either religious or medical concerns that they feel should exempt them?
We'll learn that in the coming days. And that's really, you know, John Beckio and principals will be hearing that. And it's going to be challenging for sure. But, you know.
We don't know it yet, but we have to find it out. And we'll find out some very good numbers, really, within a week.
Okay. And then it says in the resolution that those objections, medical and religious, will be quote-unquote "considered." What does that mean? What is that process? Because I know a couple of people asked that question last night. What does it look like?
Well, I think the first step was passing the resolution, honestly. And if you, I think it's another point further down, which basically says, "And now we direct the staff to come up with a plan to make this all happen." And yes, we've had lots of side conversations about religious and medical reasons. And I think there's a lot of information out there which will help us come up with some kind of a plan. But it's not in place yet. That was really putting, you know, the cart before the horse.
Okay.
There is state law that we can, I mean, there's, there are best practices that we can look at. I mean, there are exemptions for other vaccines. Unfortunately, we don't have state legislation about this yet, but I welcome it. I welcome the state leadership on these types of questions that school districts all across California are facing. So we'll look at what others are doing and make it as, you know, credible and stringent as possible. But also, if someone has a medical reason as to why they can't get the vaccine, I of course don't want that person to be, put their medical, put their health in jeopardy to keep their job. I mean, that is ridiculous. Of course, there's going to be medical exemptions. I am, you know, the religious ones, I've been reading, there are 2,600 cops in LA are, you know, claiming religious exemptions. I think we need to be pretty, you know, have our eyes wide open there. But as a person of faith, I can say that. But, but yeah, I mean, on medical, I don't want anyone out there of those 160 employees, you know, if they have a legitimate medical reason, then that'll be honored.
All right. Just as a side point of clarification, Laura, personal and religious beliefs are not allowed as of 2016 for reasons not to get vaccinated to enter kindergarten.
That's right. That was the Dr. Pan bill up there that when the people were throwing things at the Senate.
So it's a whole new world.
Yeah. So also in your piece, you mentioned that there have been about 50 kids and 20 staff who've been infected with COVID, which, when you look at the overall population of the district, you know, is not, is not that much. Did you see a disturbing trend line that those, those were spiking those numbers? Or were those absolute numbers really of such concern to you?
Laura?
Yeah, I did see a trend. And like I referenced, there was an, you know, three kids in a class along with that, you know, with an employee. And that's a, we, up until that point, as far as we know, there had been no transmission in class, in school. And so we just need to prevent that. We, again, the whole goal is to keep our schools open. And when you do that, when there are cases in a class, you have to quarantine the whole class. And that means kids aren't getting the kind of education that we know they need. So, yeah, we were just in a, not a very good trajectory of at least one or two-a-day cases, sometimes more. And in certain schools, predominant. So we had to, we had to do what we can.
And that was completely different from what was in the springtime. It was a huge increase from our springtime numbers, which were the numbers, of course, which gave us great hope and allowed us to open our schools. So then when you look at those numbers changing dramatically in the wrong way, that's also why we felt like we needed to act.
And disproportionately unvaccinated, I, we should add. I mean, the case, the positive cases in our schools, both students and employees were disproportionately of just unvaccinated. I mean, of course, the elementary kids can't be, can't be vaccinated, but that's, that's, those are mostly who are getting.
Well, that, that's an interesting question because the 12, 12 and over have the vaccine available to them. Why did you not require a vaccine for those students?
Well, we're looking for it.
We sure are. And I think that, you know, if you look at the, at the resolution, it's very much geared toward the issues we'll have to address with regard to employees and their jobs and the employee bargaining units, et cetera. So we felt like it was a clean way to look at it, was to address employees first. But believe me, we'll be thinking and working hard on the next step, which would be the 12 to 17-year-olds.
So we should be looking for that. Very low percentage, as I, as I recall, of the 12 to 17-year-olds who are vaccinated now in the schools?
Well, we, we don't know. We're doing surveys of our student population. We, I just, the number that we included in the op-ed was the county number, which is 53% of those eligible children. So 12 to, 12 to 17. And so, yeah, that needs to be higher. I mean, especially, you know, kids are interacting with one another. And in our view, that needs to be higher, which is why our district, thankfully, the staff is, you know, doing vaccine clinics almost every evening at different schools, rotating around in partnership with county public health. And we're just trying to make it as accessible and easy as possible.
It's also interesting, it's also interesting to note that California Teachers Association has come out in favor of the students being vaccinated, a mandate.
Well, yeah, I was going to note that because the president of the CTA, of the local teachers' union was among those who testified last night. And they had done a survey of their members, which overwhelmingly, among those who responded, said, "Yeah, they supported what you did last night." But the other union, the classified workers, both the head of the union and a number of, apparently, members of that union were against it. So do you have to meet and confer with them? Or what's the, what's the next step there?
Well, we don't, obviously. The board doesn't negotiate changes in working conditions. I would just say that I don't think that each of those folks last night were speaking on their own personal beliefs. And we've also received quite a few emails from people who said they didn't agree with, with that, that perspective. Having said that, our numbers are our numbers. And the greatest number of unvaccinated employees are the classified employees. So we have work to do.
Yeah. Okay. Let me just, I try never to waste a reporting opportunity. So since I sat and listened to all this, I'm going to, I want to just throw out some of the arguments that I heard repeatedly and hear your response for those folks who didn't have a chance to listen in. One of the arguments was, "Why are you doing away with the testing option? You know, we're glad to continue having this weekly testing to find out if we have it and so on and so forth. Why not leave that choice?" What's, what's your response to that?
Well, we just didn't want that to be an option for not getting vaccinated. But certainly, testing is still going to continue with our, for sure, with our students. And testing would always be available to our staff, just right there in the health office. So testing, for sure, is one of the tools. We listed it in our op-ed of one of the things we have to do. But, but having that be the way to avoid a vaccine is just a no-can-do anymore.
And also, if we do end up exempting a lot of folks for religious and/or personal medical reasons, they'll have to continue getting testing.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah, okay, fair enough. And we, yeah, we talked about the religious and medical exemptions. We talked about the unions. This is a Democratic plot, as I heard, an attempt to, you know, make people obey the government. We had Darcell Elliott, head of the local Democratic Party, as you mentioned, Congressman Carvajal's representative, Senator Limone's representative, that guy on the board of supervisors, representative. There were a number of Democrats. What's your answer to that?
Never crossed my mind. This is a health plot. I mean,
Such a great way to put it. I love it.
Like, literally never, I didn't even cross my mind until that point was raised.
I try, so true. I try really hard to just, of course, keep a straight face throughout all.
Well, you were wearing a mask, so it was fairly easy.
It's true. And my glasses and my bangs, but I probably dropped my jaw because of all the things we've thought about. We're not forced by the Democratic Party. We're not paid by the Democratic Party. And we never once have ever discussed being Democrats as the reason that we would come up with what we consider to be a really strong solution.
As a matter of.
In fact, too, you know, the swabs cause cancer. Have you heard that one? And also that the FDA has not yet approved the Pfizer vaccine. That's also, also.
Well, and more people, according to some of our letters, have died from the vaccine and died from COVID.
Right. All right. What about this one? You're going to lose staff as a result of this. One person referenced a large-scale walkout that people will give up their jobs rather than get the vaccine. Are you at all concerned about that?
I'm concerned about a health science teacher teaching, who is anti-vaccination. I just don't get it. And that's what we heard from last night. I am more concerned about that. I love teachers. I am supportive of teachers. I think the vast majority are, you know, right there aligned with trusting science, with imparting these notions of public health to our children. But when you hear, when you hear a health science teacher expound, say, all these anti-vax.
A UCSP graduate. So there you are.
Don't work? I mean, oh, my gosh. Wow, let's.
Well, also, you know, a couple nurses, LVNs, et cetera. It is, it is astounding. But to your, to your question, Jerry, I don't want to lose any good teachers. But I do think this is a choice. And in some ways, it is just one more push. I believe there are a number of people out there that just have, you know, sort of not thought as deeply about it as we're going to absolutely force them to now.
All right. And what about the point that there were pretty dramatic testimony about people being injured by the vaccine? One woman had a number of, she said, had a number of family members. And then there was another woman who had first-person statements about that. How much do you consider that? How much weight do you give that, is what I should ask?
I mean, I would, I would defer to county public health officials if that, you know, if people are having in our, in our local community, bad reactions to the vaccine, that needs to be investigated. That should be reported on. That's for us to determine. What we, you know, what we take is from our epidemiologists, from our officials who are doctors, who say that this is by and large safe. Again, 6 billion people have taken a dose. And this is a safe vaccine. Of course, it's not 100% safe, but it is extraordinarily safe.
Yeah. It's important to listen to it. But Jerry, I was thinking about that. And of course, it's terrible to think that there have been adverse reactions. On the other hand, I think it is a matter of trust, trusting what the data says and trusting your own experience. And in terms of my own experience, you know, having backed, worked at the vaccination clinic at Cottage where 100,000 people were vaccinated, I would say that, and keeping in mind that we kept people at least 15 minutes, many people, 30 minutes, to see what kind of reaction they had. And if they had any kind of reaction, any kind, they went right across the street to the ER. So I think that it's important to just keep it in perspective, not to forget it or dismiss it, but keep it in perspective.
Fair enough. All right. And then the last argument I would characterize as both freedoms. People are, their freedoms are being taken away as some here, which, and the subset of that is, I did my research online. But, you know, I think Laura, you referenced this in your closing comments. It really is this conflict, political conflict essentially, between, you know, communitarianism and pure individualism. And obviously, we've had that argument since the founding of the republic. But you came down pretty squarely on the, on the side of communitarianism, I guess.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, again, we're in a health crisis. This is a pandemic. This is a time when you, you don't think just about what you're, you're entitled to, your rights. You think about what's good for the collective. And it's just so, it's very clear to me. And when you hear these arguments about freedom and, you know, my body and all this, it's like, well, yeah, you can't, you know, you can't come to school and teach a class of kids if you're intoxicated either. You can't smoke in a classroom. I mean, there are rules to be part of one another in a community that we abide by. You know, you can't, I mean, again, drive drunk. That's putting something in your body. I mean, it's, you know, I appreciate that this, that people might have, people do have hesitations and they have questions. But there's so much data out there. That's another one that gets me, like, where's the data? I mean, gosh, like, we, again, 6 billion doses and so much testing and the FDA approval. And, you know, I listened to eight hours of that FDA booster hearing because, you know, we got enough five or six people not from our district, you know, sending it to us, saying, "Have you heard it?" And so I listened to it. There's so much out there to assure us of the diligence as going into the research on this.
All right. Let me ask you one more sort of broader question. There've been a number of reports in the national media in recent weeks about school board members just across the country just calling it quits. I mean, I know you, you both are really highly compensated for this position. Your, your, your recompense running into the low three figures. And, you know, you're, it's essentially a volunteer job. Yeah, you get a couple of things. But, you know, you've got this. And, and, you know, I joke about it, but, you know, it can't be easy to be, sit there and be called, you know, someone who's violating the Nuremberg codes and, you know, compared to Nazi doctors and, and stuff like that. And, you know, there's this, there's the critical race theory thing, which we haven't even talked about yet this year, which I expect we will be. So that it just seems like so many of these local education issues have been, are now being viewed through the lens of national politics, which is completely polarized, of course. I mean, just, just talk a little bit about that, about what that's like to be hearing that kind of stuff. And Kate, I want to ask you specifically, you've been in education since, you know, before the last Ice Age.
Thank you. And you were there with me. Thank you.
Well, I covered the first pandemic, the 1918 one.
That's true. I was a little later than that.
Be that as it may, has there ever been an issue like this in your memory, which has so, so polarized people and so divided people?
No. And that's why I, you know, I tip my hat every time I can to the teachers, administrators, the leaders. Because I, in my career, addressed a lot of different crises, whether it was fires, earthquakes, 9/11, issues around staff deaths. I mean, you can imagine, schools are life and, and so life happens. But no, I've never seen anything like this. And it's, it's not, it's important to understand, I think, the, the place that social media has had in all of this because it really feeds a lot of, a lot of opinions. And in the end, I mean, I think Laura said something beautiful. I can't really quote her earlier this week. But she said, "This is what we're meant to do." And we're, you know, I always wanted to be a doctor, but I can't stand bodily fluids. And Laura has probably some other.
There's the headline. I appreciate it.
It's true. So, you know, if, if we can do this and we have, you know, we have the internal strength to be able to do it, we're the right ones to do it. And I always just kind of go back to what my mom always said, which was, "Consider the source." So in the end, I just sort of take a breath and consider the source.
Laura, how about you? I mean, from a national perspective, what's happening here is, I mean, I have to say, it was pretty respectful overall, the commentary. But nonetheless, you know, the allegations and the charges and the insults and the. But nonetheless, you know, the allegations and the charges and the insults and the, you know, I guess, just questioning your your motivation, you know, oh, you're really doing this for some awful reason. You know, you're not really doing this to help the kids. I mean, what's your response to that? Do you ever just want to say that? You know, who needs this? I don't I don't want to do this anymore.
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely intense. And it, you know, it's more personal than on the national level where I've worked, for sure. I mean, you know, you hear from my dentist and people that, you know, you that you actually really know. And so it's just, again, like Kate said, it's it's just the job is to be able to take the incoming and yeah, the job, that's the job. And it comes with the territory. I do, you know, there is the upside of a lot of people paying attention to their school boards during COVID. You know, again, last summer, we had nine hundred people on one Zoom. So that's that comes with good and bad, right? But but we, I do worry on a national trend. You read about like Steve Bannon, you know, has this initiative or whatever you would call it to take over school boards. They're vulnerable to that because I'll get on my my high horse here. But like, a lot of them don't have campaign finance rules, like we barely do. And so it's pretty easy. You could run a candidate, you could have an ideology that that is put forward. So I think we have to, you know, this take this sort of as a broader, broader strokes of like, we got to protect our school boards and make sure that they are people like Kate and I and and the five of us, who are really trying to be voices of the community and not some sort of national political movement. So I would, again, just kind of, I put it back to like, we have to have campaign finance rules so that, you know, we shouldn't be, it shouldn't be a forty nine hundred dollar donation. It should be seventy five dollars or a hundred dollars to, you know, who's on your school board. So that's something I'm looking at employing here in Santa Barbara Unified. Heads up, Madam President, that they did it at Santa Barbara City College. Marcia Croninger did that. So I think we need to look at that, because I do see it all related.
Yeah, I do, too. You know, I think about my career. And when I was a principal, almost twenty years, I guess, people would always say to me, okay, I can't believe you do that job. It's, you know, I would never want your job. And I love being a school principal, absolutely, as I've told both you a number of times. But now people are just saying to us, I would never want to be a school board president and to Laura, or even on the school board. And to Laura's point, something's got to change. And I appreciate the question because we need really people, we need people who are dedicated and smart and willing to put in the work, no matter whether you make three hundred dollars a month or not.
Yeah, Ralph Reed, the the national leader of evangelical churches, moral majority, that kind of thing, famously said, you know, I would rather have one thousand school boards and no president than one president and and no school boards. And it is an area, I think, particularly where conservative folks have have tried to make an entry point and have an effect on the culture, not necessarily politics so much, but but on the culture. And and just to close, you all, the the school district are kind of further out on this than any other public agency in in the county. I mean, the supervisors have said, yeah, county employees should have a testing or or vaccine requirement. The city has done absolutely nothing, as far as I can tell. And I think that's one of the points that was in the resolution, as I recall. You were kind of, at least indirectly, calling for for other agencies to move ahead on this.
We were. We did the first time. That's not a new, that is not a new element of the resolution. Frankly, I'm disappointed about the city. I think it's a big group of people and we need them on board. So we'll keep working.
Laura?
Yeah, we were happy for their support. But this is a time in this crisis where the carrots haven't been working very well. I mean, we still need to provide the incentives. We still need to have vaccine clinics that are super accessible and make this easy for people to get the vaccine. But we've tried this for a long time. We've, you know, given out beer and money and whatever, tickets to Dodger games. And now it's time for government to do what government's meant to do, and that's to lead. And I, you know, you start first with taxpayer dollars. I'm just so conscious of my job is that we are spending taxpayer dollars. You know, these employees are paid by the people. And I, again, go back to this collective responsibility. So I hope that the county and city, for sure, the city, without any kind of mandate, follows suit. But I also leave it to them. I mean, we we're dealing with children. So that's a real threshold question, you know, of 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 the urgency of this. And and not necessarily the jobs related to the county, you know. Again, I don't, with the jails, that's a whole thing that they need to consider, sort of where they get tough, tougher than they are, and if they need to. But I certainly think that it's government's responsibility. And I hope that a post-recall election Newsom will make this statewide. And I wouldn't be a hundred percent surprised if he did soon, because I believe his heart is probably here to put this kind of mandate fully for for school employees, like Oregon has done. My cousin works up there and for the governor there, and and they've taken away the testing option. And then, you know, look to see what we can do with students and maybe sixteen and up or what what it might be. But I'm I'm grateful that I think we're going to see a lot more bold leadership from our governor. And I welcome that. I crave it.
I also love the fact that we're we are nimble. We are much more nimble than many other districts who are frankly, much larger and have a more sort of diverse or a difficult situation on their board or the board is against the superintendent or something like that. There are a number of districts throughout the state that are really considering this. But we moved fast. And for that, I'm super proud.
Once again, we are all blessed to live here. So Jay, real quick, so when when might we see some movement on the requirement for the students who are eligible to get the vaccine?
We're looking at policy options right now. I mean, again, I should I should let Kate, who runs our meetings and our agendas, answer that question. But I'm fast and furious looking and seeing what, you know, Culver City has done it, LAUSD has done it. If anyone listening has ideas, I welcome them. But I'll let Madam President answer.
I would just say excuse
President Ford, yes.
Not Gerald Ford, thank you. I think that you should expect us to move very quickly on that. I I don't know.
Weeks, matter of months?
I'd say a matter of six weeks.
Okay, fair enough.
And maybe sooner.
All right. All right, Kate Ford, Laura Capps, thank you both for checking in the morning after you you had to get the flak jackets cleaned and the and the helmets, pound the the lumps out of those that you that you took. And we always appreciate you keeping us abreast of what's going on in the school district. And thank you, thank you for doing what you do, because it really is a thankless job. I have no idea why you do this. Okay.
Thanks. It was all worth it, though. I hope you agree, Laura. It was worth it.
I'm very proud this morning. We have a, we have so many good schools. We have, all of our schools are are great and so many good people. And a little safer soon.
All right, stay safe, you two.